Welcome to the Hutchinson Reno County Chamber of Commerce General Election Candidate Forum of 2024 for the Reno County Commission District 3 and 4 Races, the Kansas Senate District 34 up later, and the Kansas House of Representatives Districts 102 and 104. We're ready for a great evening. My name is Deborah Tuftel. I'm the President of the Hutchinson Reno County Chamber, and I will be your moderator this evening. On behalf of the Chamber, we welcome you and appreciate all of these candidates joining us tonight on this stage. Please give them a round of applause from here. We would also like to share our appreciation to the Hutchinson Community College and their staff for use of this venue and assisting with the technology tonight. Also, a warm thanks to our sponsors, AT&amp;T and Hutchinson Regional Healthcare System, who sponsor our annual legislative events. Thank you also to our media partners and our Chamber members who submitted topics for tonight, and to the Public Policy Committee who meets regularly about issues of importance to our members. As a reminder, the Chamber does not endorse candidates, however, it is part of our mission to organize events such as these about public policy issues and to engage in events so we can hear about the positions of those seeking office. The discussion tonight will start with the contested races for the Reno County Commission Districts 3 and 4 for the general election, which will be held on November 5th. So I'd like to introduce the candidates on the stage, who I know you are all excited to hear from tonight. We are joined by four candidates for the primaries for District 3 and 4, and the district that did not have opposition on the ballot will not be on the stage tonight, but we wish them well. Reno County Commission District 3 candidates for office include Garth Strand of Bueller and Ron Vincent of Hutchinson. Thank you, gentlemen. And the candidates for Reno County Commission District 4 include Lindsey Hatfield and Richard Winger, both from Hutchinson. Candidates, we are grateful for your participation tonight. The format for the county commission candidates will begin with a two-minute opening statement, and at the end of the debate, we will conclude with a two-minute closing statement from each candidate. And a series of questions that were prepared by the Public Policy Committee will be asked. Candidates will respond first in order by district number and alphabetically by last name, and then we will rotate the first respondent with each subsequent question. Candidates will have one minute to respond to their opponent. The first person to answer in each district will have a chance for a 30-second rebuttal, and then we will move to the next district. So in order to keep this moving tonight, we have about six to eight questions prepared. Marcy Kaufman is down in front, and she will be timing the responses for the candidates, and she will hold up a yellow card when there are 30 seconds remaining, and then when you hear the bell, and a red card will reserve the right to jump in if you go over. All right. Finally, before we begin, for the audience, we ask everyone to please be respectful of all of the candidates on the stage. Please refrain from interruptions or obstructing the view of those seated behind you. Applause is welcome, but please keep other noise to a minimum to be respectful of your neighbors, and as a reminder, of course, please silence your cell phones. Thank you for your cooperation with that. So it's time to begin. Let's begin with the opening statements in order by district number and last name, so we will first hear from District 3 candidate, Mr. Garth Strand.
Thank you, Chamber, and thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. You'll notice that there are no incumbents on the stage tonight, so your vote holds a real change for Reno County. As with any new hire decision, it's critical to understand backgrounds and experience. So here's mine. I'm a Kansas original, growing up on a small farm on the edge of the Flint Hills. Shortly after graduating from K-State, I found myself here in Reno County, where I've been for more than 40 years. I've invested a lot of heart and soul in this community. I retired from Heartland Credit Union after 37 years, the last 28 as president. During my 28 years, the credit union experienced remarkable growth. Assets grew from 19 to about 300 million, and from one location to nine. I am most proud of the wonderful individuals I had a chance to work with, and the fact that together, we achieved some of the very best numbers in the entire country. I'm also proud of what was honestly a basement startup, and now a separate entity known as Members Mortgage Services. They eventually purchased a vacant building across from the post office and now employ about 60 people. During my career, I also served five years as Chair of our State Trade Association. I was appointed by the Governor and served four years as Chair of the Kansas Credit Union Council, and I also served on committees for our National Trade Association. But always, job one was serving a member base that grew to over 20,000. I've served 10 years on the Reno County Public Building Commission, and the last three years on the Reno County Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm not a brainiac, but I do listen more than I talk. I have a strong sense of empathy, and I know how to succeed with teams. And I know how to find the greatest good for the greatest number. So as you consider us four new hires, I ask that you put politics aside and make the best hire for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strand. And next, we will hear from District 3 candidate, Mr. Ron Vincent.
I'm Ron Vincent. Thank you all for coming. I'm a lifelong resident of Reno County, born and raised here with the Great School of Union Valley, high school at Bueller. Married to my wife, Becky, for the 50 years since February. We have two grown sons and two granddaughters. I'm a small business owner for 47 years, right here in Hutchinson, Reno County. Former president and founding member of the Kansas Small Flow Association, Kansas Groundwater Member Association for 37 years, and state licensed water rail contractor for 37 years. Right now, the only thing I'm really active in is I'm on the board for the Hutchinson Building Association. I've run a small business for 47 years. In that time, we acquired three small struggling businesses and turned them around and made them profitable. During that time, my 47 years, a little over half of that, we became financially stable till we did not incur any more debt. And that was done by good, solid financial and hard work, and making the right decisions at the right time. I have good business sense and a lot of common sense. That's basically what I'm bringing to the table, is the common sense part that we do.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. And next, we will hear from the candidates for District 4. First, Ms. Lindsey Hatfield.
Thanks so much to the Chamber for having us. Hi, everybody, I'm Lindsey Hatfield. I am a Hutchinson native, born and raised here, graduated from Bueller High School, and I'm a mom to Clayton and Ruby in the back row back there. Hi, guys. I'm also a small business owner. I own Salt City Scoops, which is an ice cream cookie sandwich trailer that mostly runs in the summertime, and I work full-time from home in a property management, for a property management company. So I also met my husband, Nathan. We've been married for 16 years. He and I met at the Hutchinson Mall 20 years ago, when we both worked at a music store together. In fact, I remember the very first day I went to clock in, I passed him on the way to clock in, and here we are, 20 years later, still married. And after high school, we graduated, we moved away to go to college, and then got married, had a couple kids, and decided that we wanted to move back to Reno County to settle down and raise our family. I'm running for Reno County Commission because it's time for a change. Our commission has looked, and sounded, and acted basically the same for a really long time, and they have been so focused on cutting their way to prosperity or cutting the budget that I don't feel like they have an eye for the future. And to me, the future of Reno County, we need to be focused on growth and value. I think we should be growing our tax base, which will lessen the burden of property taxes for all residents. There's a lot more that we're going to cover, I'm sure, tonight, but some of my priorities are growing economic development, housing, childcare. I think we have a real issue in this town with people moving away, and we need to make Reno County a place that people want to move to, open businesses in, create jobs, because this is a wonderful, vibrant community to be a part of.
Thank you, Ms. Hatfield. And next, District 4 candidate, Richard Winger.
Hi, my name is Richard, and I've lived in Hutch in Reno County since 1973, moved away briefly, but have always been drawn back to this area. I love the community. I've lived in my house for over 30 years. My wife and I have been married 26 years. We have four grown kids and 13 grandkids. So my idea of the future is to look forward to leaving this place better for them than it is for us even. So a little bit about me, I worked at a job for 35 years, took it from a mom-and-pop little store to one of the biggest pool places in the country, and dealing with customers and helping solve problems. I've also worked, after I retired, I worked at the county in the maintenance department for about six months, but my body was telling me no, even though my mind was telling me yes. And so after that, I actually have gotten the privilege of working for the college in the campus bookstore. So I actually help all age students and get their books and any fine clothing wares that they want to get, but I also help do the ordering, processing of the orders, and getting the store taken care of. I've always prided myself on taking care of a customer. So if you live in the county, or in the city, or even in the state, I love this state, I love this county, and this city, and I'm willing to listen to what you have to say, and then willing to serve and let you know what's going on, so that you don't have questions in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Winger. Now we're ready to get started with questions, which were prepared by the Chamber's Public Policy Committee. The first question, we will begin with District 3 candidate Garth Strand, followed by Ron Vincent, and then we will have the opportunity for Mr. Strand to offer a rebuttal if he chooses. So the first question, how do you feel your professional or volunteer roles have prepared you to make staffing and budgeting decisions for Reno County?
I think I pretty much described that in my opening statement. I spent 28 years leading a sizable financial institution, which is quite complex, used to big numbers. I was very involved in hiring decisions, because my basic belief is if you make good hiring decisions, that solves a lot of problems in the future. I understand how a diverse group of people can be brought together to achieve common goals, and I've spent the last three years on the Reno County Planning and Zoning Committee, and also the Public Building Commission, so gotten a good look at some behind-the-scenes work that happens at Reno County.
Well, I was about to say, I credit to my 47 years as a small business owner, small, I mean small, six employees. So my job wasn't just there, it was everything from the payroll to the, every decision made, what was made for me being in that small of a company. And I had a lot of, even though it was small, there's a lot of decisions to be made. You know, we grew, and grew, and grew, and that was by making smart financial and business decisions. And, you know, with that, that's where I credit, you know, my knowledge, and also I also credit myself for having a lot of common sense, and listening to the logical things, and the logical way to go about solving problems.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. Mr. Strand?
I would add that I think leadership is very important at our county commission level. I feel like our current commission spends too much time administrating. We have a full-time paid county administrator, and the county commission needs to spend more time up in the crow's nest, so to speak, looking at what's coming at us as far down the road as we can see, because good leadership actually avoids emergencies and prevents problems from being problems before they even get to be problems. And I feel like I have a good history and bring that to bear.
Thank you both. Next, for Commission District 4, we will begin with Lindsey Hatfield.
I agree with Garth. Good leadership prevents disasters from happening, essentially. I work in property management, asset management, if you will, it involves a lot of multifamily residential buildings, and each one is its own asset. And Reno County is an asset. We prepare budgets for each of our assets that we manage, just like we would be overseeing the budget, approving the budget for Reno County. And part of managing an asset is not just putting a Band-Aid on something, but looking further into the future, and actually planning ahead for the future, and preparing for bigger expenses in the future, and not just slapping a Band-Aid on something and having the same issue come up over and over again. So I'm very confident making budgets, and also part of property management is listening. When people call you, they're never happy, and so I know that I would be a wonderful ear to all of my constituents in District 4 and beyond.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear a response from Richard Winger.
So working for Pools Plus, you would do a job, you would have to visit with the person that's wanting the job done, and then once you got the job, they would hire people to come and work, either summer help or even a full-time person, and I was the head service person. So I would actually train those people to do the job, and I have a way about addressing a problem, or showing them how to fix something, and use tools and things like that. But we also have to do the budget of doing the job, so when you budget a job, and it comes to fruition, you have to make sure it's under budget, and I can do that on a regular basis.
Ms. Hatfield, do you have any other comment?
No, I don't have any.
Okay. Next question, we will begin this one with District 4, beginning with Mr. Winger, and then the response by Lindsey Hatfield. Question number two, with competing budget priorities and limited resources, how would you prioritize those competing priorities in the county budget?
So looking at the budget, there are mandated things that have to be done, and so the mandated things would have to be first on the list. But that being said, like Lindsey was saying, if we can grow the economy in this county and this city, then they'll actually have more revenue to help solve the problems or take care of the other departments. That being said, if things have to be cut, I believe you can always make things more efficient and effective, and so you would just go through the budget and prioritize them that way.
Okay. And Ms. Hatfield?
Yeah, I agree. There's obviously the mandated things that we have to budget for, but I think as a whole, we need to be focused more on the future and thinking about growth, and what makes our community strong. So I would love to budget more for economic development. I'm sure we'll talk about that later, but I believe our budget only allows for $400,000 in economic development, which is half a percent of the entire budget, and that is something that's huge for Reno County, and will get more people to live here, pay taxes, put their money into our community. That, number one, will be a really wonderful way for us to grow our tax base.
Mr. Winger, do you have any other comment?
No.
All right. So next, for District 3, we'll start with Ron Vincent, followed by Garth Strand.
Yes, I agree. The budget needs to go to our needs. Our needs come first, you know, and we've got to differentiate between the needs and the wants. We'll take care of the needs, and I feel like, you know, there's plenty of money there to take care of the needs, instead of just what everybody wants, or where they want to spend it at. So the first thing would be, yes, take care of what we have to do, our public health, our roads, bridges, our sheriff's office, that they need to be properly funded, and that would be the first priority on mine, is to take care of our needs and see if we can't get the taxes down with just the needs to start with and go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. And Mr. Strand?
Commissioner Hurst says that Reno County is the 15th lowest tax rate county in the state, so, and I have confirmed that. With that in mind, I'm not sure that we're overspending. I tend to think it's a case that we are under-investing, and it's starting to show up. It's not starting, it's got a firm hold, starting to present itself in things like population loss. We haven't invested in quality of life issues, things that prospective residents or businesses look at our county, look at our community, and ask themselves, do I want to go there? How is local government performing? I do think that we need to be more aware of investing and not just trying to have a lower and lower and lower budget. Somebody said earlier, we can't save our way to prosperity, and I think that's entirely true. We need to look at generating more income.
And Mr. Vincent, do you have any comment?
Yes, and we do need to generate more income, and the best way to do that would be to increase the base. The way to do that is to bring more industry and people into our county. We have to offer them some, and we do need to work on economic development.
All right. Question three. This question, we will begin with Mr. Vincent, followed by Mr. Strand. Last week, the commission spent time discussing commercial solar regulations in portions of Reno County. What is your position on regulating commercial solar in zoned and unzoned areas of Reno County?
I think the Planning Board, which Garth is on, did a very good job. I feel like this issue should have been several months ago, that they brought forth a good plan to not restrict the commercial from zoned areas. That don't mean that anybody just go up and put commercial wherever they want. I mean, there's still going to be regulations, and, you know, I'm for that. That's some economic growth, but that'll help the tax base. It's there, and like I said, the Planning and Zoning Commission had it pretty well hashed out two or three meetings ago, and now the commission just finally got around to getting it done in a sensible way.
Mr. Strand?
Thank you. We did spend a lot of time working on that issue, pretty much a year or more, and the public record will show, I have to, I think, watch what I say, because I am serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission, so I'm not speaking on behalf of the Planning and Zoning Commission, these are my own opinions. But I did make the motion to oppose the ban on solar. There are good places in the county for solar, and there are bad places in the county for solar. We have regulations in place that prevent that, prevent such construction in places where it shouldn't, should not be. I hope I get to speak on this a little bit more later, because I have a lot to say, but I think we need to invite solar into our county. It's good for our budget, it's good for landowners, and it's good for generating more power, which we desperately need.
Mr. Vincent, do you have any response?
No.
All right. Now, District 4, we'll begin with Richard Winger.
Well, I guess I'm falling in suit. I think that solar is a wonderful energy supplier, because it is really clean, once you get it built, and the energy is, would take some of the load off of the energy companies that we have, which should actually lower your prices, and anytime you can lower the price of anything, it's usually a good thing. So I'm all for solar, and like I said, with the regulations that they have come up with, we should be able to do it in the county and not be an issue with anybody. So that would be, I'm game with that for all of that right now.
Thank you. And Ms. Hatfield?
I'm going to agree with all three of these gentlemen. Yes, I fully support renewable energy and solar. I was very frustrated when they were thinking about banning it. Thanks, Garth, and the Planning Commission, by the way, for that. To me, if we were to ban it, we would be turning away potentially millions of dollars over decades that could be in Reno County's revenue, which is, to me, not a very smart move for the future and growth of Reno County. And I also don't want to forget about property rights. I don't like telling a landowner what they can and can't do with their property. If there's a farmer who's not making a lot of money on his farm and can make money by having a solar farm, that should be their right to do that, if they wish to do it. So yes, just like these fellows, I support renewable energy.
And Mr. Winger, any comment? Okay.
Yes.
We'll move on to question four. Currently, well, I'll introduce, Ms. Hatfield will go first on this question, followed by Richard Winger. Currently, portions of Reno County are zoned. What is your position on zoning the entire county for planning and regulatory purposes?
So you're right, there's a portion of the county that is completely unzoned, which means, right now, anybody can go to the commission, try to put up anything, get a commercial use permit. To me, I would love to zone for commercial solar. I'm all for that. Anything, obviously, I think there need to be regulations, but anything that can bring in additional revenue for Reno County that is good for our environment, I think, to me, is a no-brainer.
All right. And Mr. Winger?
So in the county, there are some areas of the land that are actually taken care of by the federal government, so they can't be zoned, from what I understand. And zoning, if you have an area that is zoned and it's already under control, but the areas that are not zoned, I think the farmers that are in this county believe that it's a right of theirs to be able to do what they want to do on their property. That being said, if somebody's doing something as harmful, I am sure there's a way through the commission to take care of that issue where it would not become a problem. So not 100% sure that we need to zone the whole state, but that would be my point right now.
Ms. Hatfield, any comment?
The only comment is, I believe we're one of the only counties who still has an unzoned portion of the rural part of the county. I think that is my only comment. Otherwise, I agree.
Okay. And next, we'll move to District 3, beginning with Garth Strand, followed by Ron Vincent.
Since I have had a close and in-person look at planning and zoning, I'm entirely comfortable with our process, so personally, I would be in favor of zoning the entire county. That being said, I respect the right of the people that live there, and I think they need to decide what they want to happen to their property. The big picture to me is not being zoned sounds good until it's your ox that gets gored. And let's say that your neighbor out in far west Reno County wants to put in an adult entertainment venue with Rolling Stones-type concert sound equipment on the outdoor patio. If you're not zoned, you are not going to be happy. So lots of things can happen. I feel very confident in our zoning process and the protections that are built in.
Mr. Vincent?
Well, yeah, that was just recently, I think, Mr. Parks, that's kind of some of his district, he had some town hall meeting out there, and the citizens in that area did not want to be zoned, so I think it's been somewhat put to death, and I respect their decisions on that. So as far as zoning that part of the county that's not zoned, if it's not a, I haven't heard of any problems there. I attended the county commissions' meetings religiously, and if they don't want zoned, I'm fine with them being unzoned.
All right. And Mr. Strand, any comment?
The only comment would be, I'd reiterate the fact that unzoned sounds good until your ox is gored, and you have adult entertainment, you have explosive manufacturer next door, you have a junkyard next door, and if you're not zoned, you have limited options to get yourself in a happy state. But I do agree with the rights of the folks who live in the unzoned portion to make their own decision.
All right. Moving on to question five, this one, we will begin with District 3 Garth Strand, followed by Mr. Vincent. This is a multi-part question. The county commission serves as the Board of Public Health in Reno County. The community health assessment identified four important issues, including mental health, access to care, childcare, and substance misuse. What do you think Reno County's role should be in addressing these issues?
That is not a one-minute response. We need to invest heavily in our Reno County Health Department. If you remember, not too long ago, it seemed like a kind of a political stunt to me as far as changing the medical director, and I'm not sure, but it does seem like there's some desire on the part of our current commission to, if not get rid of, at least start dismantling to, if not get rid of, at least start dismantling our public health department. And that, that may sound good because it's, it saves money, but good health is nowhere to, to cut. A healthy community is a wonderful thing. And if we don't have a public health department, it's all fine and good until, until we have a public health emergency. And at that point, it's too late to reconstruct and put together what is needed.
Mr. Vincent?
Well, I, I, I got on the, the House Board Advisory Committee. I've been on there for, for almost a year. So I'm, I'm a little familiar with that. Now, I, I'm with Garth on the, on the, the House officer. In fact, I've never even met her. And I asked the question last meeting, has she ever been to the House Department? And she's never been called upon since, since she was appointed that position. So I, I'm not sure what all that was. Public health is somewhat needed. It, it, it's going to take the burden off the hospital. I mean, a lot of these people use that for, for their, for their hospital, their clinic. As far as, as it goes, it, it, it needs some looking into on, on what can be done in the private sector and, and, and what we need our health department to, to furnish. And mental health, you know, that's always there. The, the, the drug addiction, I've, I've learned that is, with fentanyl, it's just, it's just something that's, that's rancidated more and deadly. We don't know what to do about it.
Mr. Strand, 30-second rebuttal?
Again, I would repeat, I think we need to invest more in our public health department because a, a healthy community is a wonderful thing. And a, a public health department can help with things such as tobacco and alcohol addiction, certainly drugs, infant care, pregnancy care. And frankly, until the state of Kansas makes up their mind to embrace Medicaid expansion, we need a good functioning public health department more than ever.
All right. Thank you. Now District Four, Lindsey Hatfield.
Yes, I definitely agree with these gentlemen that we need to fund the Health Department specifically. So the Health Department is the only place in the county where you can access WIC, which is really important. It's actually, so the Health Department is the first reason I decided to run for County Commission because the incumbent who Mr. Winger defeated in the primary wanted to essentially dismantle the Health Department. And I thought that that was crazy. So that's what spawned me to even think about this in the beginning. Mental health and substance abuse go hand in hand. So definitely, I want to fund those and, and be supportive of mental health care in our community, substance abuse, and definitely the Health Department, absolutely.
All right. And Mr. Winger?
So, yeah, I ran for that same reason. And the Health Department, though, has, I've been a, a patient or used their facility since 1973. So I've got to take advantage of it being here. That being said, it does need to be fully funded. It's a mandated department, so most people don't know that. But we don't need to starve it or hang it on the vine. It does do a lot of great in this city and in this county. It takes care of childcare and licensing of childcare. It does work with mental and substance abuse. It does take care of those other needs that are out there, and they're not just wants, they are needs. And they will help with, hopefully, taking patients from the hospital and being able to take care of those minor needs.
Ms. Hatfield, any comment?
I would just like to add that if we're not considering healthcare as part of our overall health of the community, we are doing a disservice to ourselves because it's, our, our whole health as a community is multifaceted. And healthcare, mental health specifically, and the ability to have somewhere to go if you are, if you don't have healthcare, is really, really necessary and vital for our community.
All right. Moving on to question six. We will begin with District Four, Mr. Winger, followed by Ms. Hatfield. The question. Reno County has an important role in economic development when establishing programs and policies to encourage investment. How do you define economic development? And what do you think the county's role should be in securing new jobs and business investment here?
All right. So the county is in charge of infrastructure, and you can't build a house unless you have a foundation. So we can't get more businesses here without supplying the rough foundation that they need, plus the roads, bridges, and ways to get to it. Also, the county can supply raw materials or access to raw materials. But we also, they can also help with taxes, either do an abatement or things to, to draw people in. If you can help somebody out that's going to do, you know, a manufacturing business, you can help them to, to bring more people here in the county.
Thank you. And Ms. Hatfield?
Yes, so this is a big one for me. I definitely agree that the county plays an important role in helping to create growth in, in business opportunities in Reno County. And part of that, that I want to continue in what I would support are workforce programs and incentive programs, tax incentives for companies. Because while I don't love giving out tax incentives, if a company wants to bring their business here and create jobs, and people are going to move here and pay taxes, that's money coming into Reno County. So even if we have to give out a tax incentive, we're, it's, it's not like we're getting nothing in return. We are getting some revenue for our county. Any, any kind of support that we can give other businesses to get more people here and pay taxes and grow our tax base, that's going to help all of us.
All right. Mr. Winger, any rebuttal?
No.
All right. Moving on to District Three, we will begin with Mr. Vincent, followed by Mr. Strand.
Yeah, economic development, I feel is very, very important. But I, I think we need to get a, a definition of, of what is economic development. Having attended most of the, the commission meetings, it's very, very broad. There's, there's people asking money on behalf of economical development for everything. So, so, so we, we need to define economic development i- in, in a better way than, than one is now, and, and focus on, on that, that the growth and, and where that should go. I'm not, I'm not much on giving money away, maybe tax abatements to help businesses come in, but I, I would rather see that on the back end than, than I would the front, for, for the fact that, that that way, the people that, that's getting it, you know, has, has more to lose than the county does.
And Mr. Strand?
There's, there's a lot of ways to improve our economic development activity. I have several ideas written down here. First and foremost is to elect local government representatives that are positive and forward-thinking and are, are working to bring the community together. Any, anybody who's expanding their business, those things are important. And they don't want to, to invest their own business money in a community that is not together and is not forward-thinking. I think we have a wonderful asset in Startup Hutch. I think that we need to double down on that and create an image for Reno County as a, an entrepreneurial incubator. I think the Community College needs a, a permanent seat at the Economic Development Table. They, they have so much to offer in, in the way of supporting businesses. I, I don't like giving away money either, but I think targeted investments are appropriate.
All right. And Mr. Vincent, any other comment?
No.
Okay. Moving on to question seven. We'll begin with Mr. Vincent, followed by Mr. Strand. With population declining in most rural counties in Kansas, Reno County is very focused on ensuring a stable and growing population base. What is your message to attract prospective business and residents to Reno County?
I think the way to do that is, is, you know, economic development. I, I think businesses and people will come if, if you don't, business will come if you don't restrict them out of, out of coming here. Loosen up on some of the, some of the restrictions that we have to entice them to come. Free enterprise usually takes care of itself if, 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 if they can survive. So I, I think, I think that business would come and people will come. Back in the seventies, when I was growing up, it was a thriving community. And I, I think we've, we've kind of restricted ourselves out of the market.
All right. Mr. Strand?
That's probably one thing I would disagree with Mr. Vincent on. In all of the building projects that I was involved with over the years, I was never discouraged by any, any local government. And, and we did projects in three different counties, including Reno County. The only thing that we really ran into, and you really can't disagree with the fire department because safety is their big deal. But sometimes we did have issues with, with fire code, but that's, that's pretty simple. I, I think I'll stop there. Other than to say, I think the first and best thing that we need to do is, again, to elect forward-thinking, positive individuals who are going to bring our community together.
Mr. Vincent, any other comment?
Yeah, being on the board for the Hope, for the Hudson Builders Association, you know, I run across this first time, have, you know, from the developers and the builders, you know, is, is where I'm hearing these problems at. And, and, and that's kind of what I'm, I'm trying to relay on, on, on their behalf of, you know, how they're getting things done in, in the developing and mainly in the, in the housing industry.
All right. Next, for District Four, we'll begin with Mr. Winger, followed by Ms. Hatfield.
So I think that Reno County and Hutch and all the little towns around here are kind of like the opportunity is there for, for us to grow. We just got to be, like you said, forward-thinking. Rise Up Reno County has been a, an organization that we've got to volunteer with and for. And it's good to, to recognize businesses that are already here and encourage them, but also to go to places or have people come here and show them, you know, what you have to offer. Show them the buildings that are, that are available, or talk to them about the infrastructure that we have. This college, for instance, has some great business courses that you can take and training that you can get. And so it's there for the, for the taking. We just need to have the offering to, to be able to do it.
All right. And Ms. Hatfield?
The question was what message we would give to someone who wants to bring their business here, right?
What, what is your message to attract?
So my message would be that we are working to elect forward-thinking people and putting them in leadership roles because we are invested in our future. I would tell them that we have so much to offer. This is a wonderful place to raise your families, and that we are working at getting more housing for families because at this point, there's not enough. But we are focused on the future. We, for too long, have been acting as if we are a retire, I don't, a retirement community is what it has felt like. There is no passion towards the younger generation who have decided to put down roots here. And I would just tell other people that there is a huge amount of people here who are dedicated and invested in this community to make it better for the long run.
Mr. Winger, do you have any rebuttal or comment?
Just one more comment on to that. Like I said, I, I actually work for the college, so I get to see these young people, not just from the, this country, but from all over. And when they are here, they're just amazed how Americans do things. And like I said, so forward-thinking means that you, you look ahead, you want to bring younger people in. And I think the city and the county has done some of that with the entertainment that is available now that wasn't 25 or 30 years ago. And so I think the, the county is trying to grow, and so is the city, and we could work together and make it better.
All right. Thank you all. So moving on to question eight, and this one, we will begin with District Four, Ms. Hatfield, followed by Ms. Winger. And this is the final question before we move on to closing comments. Please tell us your top reason you are running for Reno County Commission.
So I told you my first reason, but my top reason that I'm running for Reno County, I've already mentioned it, is growth. And that is multifaceted. When I think about growth for Reno County, not only do I think about growth for economic development, and we've had businesses leaving, I want businesses to come back to us and bring more families, more people. Economic development, I want to grow our housing. Like I've mentioned in my last answer, we don't currently have enough housing. That's a nationwide issue. But we should make it easier for builders to build here, or if they want to redevelop underdeveloped areas, we shouldn't be making it harder. And two, I want to grow our support for families, and that includes continuing to support childcare. I know we've made a lot of wonderful steps recently with opening new childcare facilities, and I would fully support that. So for me, my top priority, growth.
All right. And Mr. Winger?
So my top priority would have to be, I want to be a voice for the people that live in this county and that work for this county. You can live here and you have, if you've lived here all your life or you've just moved here, you want to have, you want to have that knowledge that if I say something or if I need something, or if I have a question, that you have somebody that can help answer it and then take care of that, that question. Either with an answer right then or say, hey, I'll get back with you and be responsive to that person. And that's what I, that's why I'm running, is I want to be a problem solver and look forward to the future, but also be there for those people that are here, living and working.
And Ms. Hatfield, any final comment?
No.
All right. Moving on to District Three, we will begin with Mr. Strand, followed by Mr. Vincent.
The primary reason I'm running is, I believe we've, we've had too much partisan politics at our county commission level. And at this very grassroots level of government, I, I strongly believe that politics should be left at the door. And that is why my campaign theme has been county before party. Setting politics aside leads to improved strategic thinking, greater civility, and open-minded and honest pursuit of the truth. Leadership is important. And as a leader, I have, I do have three specific issues that are important to me. Number one, by a long shot, is our population loss. We have to get that turned around, and it has to happen fast. We're 13 years into declining numbers, and that cannot continue. Second, I talked to the fire chief, and he says that parts of Reno County are the number one fire risk in the state of Kansas, according to the Kansas Forest Service. And my last issue is water.
All right. Mr. Vincent?
The reason I'm running is to, is to try to promote economic growth and, and, and get this county back, back going forward, like the rest of us that's in the backwards. It's, it seems to be a difficult task. I'm not sure why, but, you know, I believe we, we could do that by, by being, you know, a little more friendly community to, to, to business and people coming in and, and people here that's wanting to grow.
All right. And the last rebuttal, Mr. Strand?
I would say that the number one issue for me is still leadership. And we just need some more dynamic leaders being elected to our local government. I'm, I'm really happy seeing some change at, at the City of Hutchinson level. I think they're on the right track. And I hope to heck we can get our county functioning the same way.
All right. So moving now to the closing statements for this evening, we will begin with two-minute closing statements in the reverse order from our opening. So we will begin with District Four candidates, Mr. Winger and Hatfield, followed by District Three, Mr. Vincent, Garth Strand. Mr. Winger?
Again, I'd like to thank everybody for coming. And it's been a fun little few questions here. I'd like to say that I'm not one of those, I know he was talking about not being one party, and, and I understand that. But I've got, I'm not one of the guys that goes to the right or the left guardrail. I kind of try to stay in the middle and be a common sense problem solver and take care of issues that come before me. I'm also not a kick-down-the-road-the-can, and so that we rely on other people to take care of the problem. I want to be a leader, like I said, that listens to your, your wants and your needs, and then be the person that helps to solve those needs and wants. And so I appreciate your time here tonight and taking out, time out of your evening. I know it was probably busy, and so I do appreciate that. But I thank you very much for your time, and I'd like your vote.
Next, closing statements from Lindsey Hatfield.
Thank you again, everybody, for being here into the chamber for hosting this. So I didn't take this decision to run for County Commission lightly. I am at a very different place in my life than the gentlemen I share the stage with. And I understand the commitment and the time that goes into being on the County Commission. And I really want to be a part of change for Reno County because I love it. It's my home, and now it's my children's home. And I'm not going anywhere. I'm going to live here until I die. And I will make every decision as County- And I will make every decision as County Commissioner and every vote through the lens of the future of Reno County. I don't think that I've got all the answers, but I know that a great leader listens and understands, and more importantly, has a vision. And I feel like I have a great vision for Reno County. For too long, we have been trying to cut our way to prosperity, and that hasn't been working for us, so it's time for a change. I think that we need to really think about value and growth, and we need to grow in all the areas I've said, and we need to not waste time at county commission meetings arguing over the farmer's market budget before they cut it by $1,000 and spending like an hour arguing over that when it's such a tiny part of our budget, but yet, the Reno County Farmer's Market creates a vibrant community, and people love that. So to me, that's very frustrating when I see stuff like that happen, and that's not a wonderful use of our time as, as county commissioners, and it's not serving us. I think we all love Reno County, or we wouldn't be here tonight, and I think that most of us want to see positive change at the county level. So a vote for me is a strong vote for change, and it's not more of the same thing that we've been doing over and over again. So a vote for me is also a vote for the future of Reno County, and I hope I have your vote November 5th, or if you vote early, October 17th through November 5th.
All right, next. District Three, closing comment from Mr. Vincent.
Well, I, I agree that, you know, there, there should be some, these decision-makings. Like, again, I attended most of the county commission meetings for the last five or six years. I, I think these decisions could be made. They, they passed it over this solar for three or four years, and, and finally got a decision made. But I, I, I think good, common sense decision-making is, is, needs to be done, and, and that's what I want to do. I, I want to do that so, so we can move on and, and hopefully get this, this county growing and things moving forward.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vincent, and closing statement from Mr. Strand?
Thank you, and it, it is nice to see so many people here who are concerned about our county. That's how good things are going to happen when we come together and work together to move forward. We, we need some change in Reno County, and I, I've said this statement in other venues. Some of you have heard it, but honestly, I think the four of us here, I say that I hope Lindsey wins more than I hope I win. She is just the kind of change that, that we need to see in our community to start attracting younger individuals, younger families, and there's just energy that comes with all of that for everyone. It's not just about young people, it's about all of us, but we, we do need renewed energy. And I hope that, that through this election, that we know that there's going to be two new seats on our County Commission, and, and I do hope to be one of them. I think I'm a proven business leader, and I'm, I'm an independent thinker, middle-of-the-road, financial conservative. I, I never have a challenge coming up with different ideas, and I think we desperately need new ideas to grow our entire county. Sometimes we think mostly of Hutchinson, especially when it comes to business development, but we've got an entire county to think of, and in this day and age, with high-speed internet, there is no reason why we can't be thinking the farthest points in, in Reno County to bring business to bear. That's very appealing to individuals, self-employed individuals coming here from larger markets. So we need to start reaching out, and I, I hope to be able to, to bring my skills to bear and help serve Reno County, and I too will appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you all. Please join me in one more round of applause for these county commission candidates.